I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the common council for June 18th. Please have roll call.
Presiding Officer Mayor Dean Bonderheid.
Present.
Councilmember John Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leiken.
Present.
Councilmember Vince Helming.
Present.
Councilmember Paul Lorai.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley. Councilmember Nancy Eckerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Mooney.
Present.
City Attorney Renee Kaybrick.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Kirsten Keneese, present. In order to have a quorum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. Six of the seven members are in attendance, which is a majority, therefore there is a quorum for this meeting.
Thank you. Would you please take a moment for your own personal reflection? Thank you. But all that are able, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Minutes were sent out. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I made a couple small changes that the mayor suggested, but they were just mostly typos.
You have a couple typos?
Yeah. I corrected those.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as they were presented with the correction of the typos.
Can I have a motion from Nancy?
I'll second.
Second for Vince. Any further discussion? All in favor, send me saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First thing on the agenda, before I get to you though, I'm gonna take a second. I want to recognize one of our council members who was recently awarded the top chamber director in the state of Indiana for 2024. So congratulations Nancy.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
We were gonna have the fire truck bring you into town, but it's being repaired right now. The doors were sprung and we're having it repaired, so. All-state champions need to be on the fire truck, right?
We'll do that a different day.
Okay, alright. So Tammy, I'd like to turn it over to you.
I have Nathan here with Manuel. I'll kind of talk to you about why we're here. We are requesting that a resolution be signed by the city council to adopt-
Is the mic on there?
It says it is.
Okay, it's lit up.
Yeah, it's red.
Thank you.
Anyway, to have the city of Jasper adopt our multi-mitigation plan, we have been working with all the agencies in DuBois County. All the cities and towns have all adopted the resolution. City of Jasper and Soil and Water are the last two resolutions. And then, once we have those adopted, the plan will be approved by FEMA and we will be able to be good for another five years. I have Nathan here to kind of explain the point of the multi-hazard plan and why it's so valuable.
So, as part of the planning process, we went through, looked at different potential disasters and scenarios, and the whole reason for it is to prepare for those or kind of make sure that it, you know, if it happens, you're prepared for it. So, as part of the plan, there's a whole list of projects that were identified to help mitigate any potential disasters that might happen. And on the funding side, which is where we come in on a lot of those, is in order to apply particularly to FEMA for any grants to deuce these projects, those projects have to be listed within the plan, number one. The plan has to be approved by FEMA, and it also has to be adopted by all of the bodies in the county in order to be eligible for those grants. So, it is important on multiple fronts to have this prepared and adopted.
And we did have multiple meetings. They were public meetings, as well as we invited all the towns and cities, and we even included this year all school districts. They also have to adopt this plan, along with Soil and Water and any personal dam owners. And we did have a couple of those in our county, which that's brand-new this time, this go-around. So I've adopted quite a few of these plans, and that was the first time we've had to include the schools, the dams, and the soil and water. So, but everybody was on board. We had fantastic turnout for our meetings, lots and lots of good feedback, and it's one of the best plans that we have written since I've started doing, and this is my third renewal, so. So I don't know if anybody has questions. I've worked with Renee on the resolution, and she's also got a sign-in sheet that I would like for you all to sign for us because we have to do a match for our grant dollars. And for every signature that we get on there for this meeting, that helps knock us off. And I think after this meeting, we'll have zero left on our match. So I'm very excited about that. The last time, we had a little bit of money that we had to pay out yet, so this will be fabulous, honestly.
We did have quite a few city staff members participate in those meetings, yes, that reviewed the plan.
Have there been many revisions suggested or amendments to the plan when you went to the other communities and different organizations? Not for-
Revisions, not necessarily, but there's a lot of new mitigation ideas that came from these meetings this time. And a lot of, we found that a lot of the things that were in the previous plans had been completed, so we were able to remove them from the plan and add the new ideas. So, I don't know how many ideas we actually have, but it's multiple pages in that plan.
The new personal dam, what, is there a height? Is there an acreage requirement that's on that one?
I wish I could answer that for you. I really don't know, but I can tell you, Snellville Conservation Club has a dam, so if you're familiar with that one, that is one of them that falls in it. Of course Beaver Dam does, and Potoka, but they're all already part of the towns and the government, so.
Well, we experienced that with one in the county, correct? Over at Honeyberg with the dam failure and took out a portion of the road for a good while.
That's exactly right. Yep.
Okay.
How long of a time period were you working on this?
Actually, we just started on this in January, and we motivated right through it. So we're very happy that by the, it's gonna be before the end of the year. My goal was November, and it looks like we're gonna be a lot sooner than that, so I'm pretty excited about it.
So what you're seeking this evening is a favorable recommendation from our council, correct?
Yes.
The VMA plan?
To adopt the-
Actually, a resolution. To adopt a resolution.
It would be an adoption by the city of the plan. And once all of the entities that Tammy referenced have adopted, then it gets sent in to-
To, it goes to the federal government, the FEMA are the ones that we send them to.
Yeah. And they will not finalize the plan until it's adopted by everyone.
That's correct. And we've received, like I said, I've been doing, we've been doing this, and Nerissa's over there, Nerissa's my deputy director, and we've been doing this, oh, for two months now, I think, and we've got, we've got them all, where there's 12 altogether, so.
I trust if we had a problem with anybody, any of the departments in the city, you'd be speaking up on that, so. Or to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
Resolution 2024-12, and it is available to read by title only. Could I have a motion to do that?
Make a motion to read by title only, please.
Okay, I have a motion from Paul. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second from Nancy. All in favor, send me by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with the city attorney, please read Resolution 2024-12 by title only.
Resolution number 2024-12. A resolution of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, adopting the DuBois County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt Resolution 2024-12?
So moved.
I have a motion from John.
I'll second.
A second. Phil? Any further discussion? None? All in favor, send me by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. I'll need, as Tammy said, your signatures on the sign-in sheet and then also on the resolution.
I greatly appreciate your support.
Is-
Thanks for all your work on it. Thank you.
You have an official copy of the resolution you're sending? Next thing on the agenda is department presentation for community development and planning. Josh, councilman.
Did everybody get one? Did I get one?
We haven't.
Thank you.
Phil, please.
Do you need another one, Josh?
We can share.
He's got one.
I have one. Everybody's got one.
I'll second to figure out this sharing thing real quick. Okay. Thank you to the council for asking me to present the Department of Community Development and Planning this month. Before I begin, I wanted to take a moment to thank Mayor Bonderheid and you as a council for allowing me to serve in this amazing community as the Director of Community Development and Planning. It's an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Jasper and one that I do not take lightly. As your Director of Community Development, I believe it's fitting that I've been asked to speak to you today, this month, the month of June. Tomorrow, we as a city will be closed as we celebrate Juneteenth. Officially called Juneteenth National Independence Day, this federal holiday celebrates the final enforcement action of the Emancipation Proclamation at the end of the American Civil War, freeing the last remaining slaves in Texas. Additionally, in June, we celebrate Pride Month, which honors the 1969 Stonewall Riots, a pivotal event in the fight for LGBTQ rights and celebrates the progress made since then. Pride Month emphasizes the importance of visibility and representation, encouraging people to express their identities openly and proudly. It challenges stigma and promotes a culture of exceptions and inclusions. Though not often recognized in stories of Jasper's past, these groups have always been present and will continue to be an integral part of our strength as a community as we move forward. As your Director of Community Development, I'm happy to celebrate Juneteenth and Pride Month alongside our fellow brothers and sisters. I would also like to thank my staff for the great work they did in 2023. Additionally, Steve Dills will be retiring at the end of the month. He has been an invaluable asset to this department and created, or helped create efficiencies and processes that continue to make us a better department while bringing a jovial, customer-focused attitude each and every day, and we are thankful for that. So as we begin to look at 2023 in review of, for the Department of Community Planning and Development, the board, or, excuse me, the department oversees four boards currently: the Jasper Board of Zoning Appeals, Jasper Planning Commission, the Jasper Redevelopment Commission, and the Jasper Economic Development Commission. Last year, the BZA saw 78 petitions. That was 75 variances and three special exceptions. That's slightly up over 2022, where we had 70 petitions in total. Year-to-date, this date, or, excuse me, year-to-date as of this month, we've seen 28 petitions. The Planning Commission or the Platte Committee saw three re-zones and six Platts last year.
I have a question first, before we get-
Sure.
On the BZA, so some of those that are petitioned, is it then looked at the overall, I forget what the document is called, to see if some of those, instead of being a variance that's given, that could just be incorporated as a natural part of that plan? Is that still being done, like on an annual basis?
We do. I didn't for this presentation, but we do collect all that information as the type of the variance that's given, and then at the end of the year, the Planning Commission is presented with suggested UDO changes, or anybody can suggest UDO changes that occur at the end of the year.
Okay. And based on really some of the variance request, some of that is?
Can you define your question? Yeah.
We see a lot of repeat. We revisit it every October. We start with a list of ideas. Hey, this is what we had in the last year, and we saw-
A good example is, at one point in time, the maximum height-
Yeah.
-per structure was 16 feet, and it was just constant. It was a revolving door, people coming in for a variance for a height, a change in the height. And so, we took a look at that, that got changed.
And we changed it to 22, and we still get questions about the 22-foot height. And same thing with, you know, a common occurrence is compatibility of materials with the primary structure. But just because we continue to get some of those things doesn't mean we should necessarily get rid of those things. It's a check and balance, per se, in the system to make sure that what we're trying to prevent and what they're trying to do is, in fact, the right thing to do. In 2023, we had 326 total permits issued throughout the department, slightly over 22's numbers of 320 total permits in total regarding improvement location, which is building permits. That would be single-family homes, sheds, businesses, the type. We had almost $36 million in investment in the community. I'm not gonna go through the types of permit numbers, but you can see the numbers on there. In 2023, we had 102 new residents created in the city of Jasper. That was 34 single-family residence homes, and 68 units were created through duplexes and apartment developments, much like university heights. Additionally, the Heart of Jasper works hand-in-hand with my department, and I cannot speak highly enough about what the work for the Heart of Jasper has done, both for the community and for our department. They've been integral part of, you know, community development and certainly activating and revitalizing the downtown. We can, we as a city revitalize the downtown in the physical space, and they're revitalizing the town in the social space. Some of the things, I don't wanna go through all of them, but some of the main things or some of the bigger things are the two alleys you see listed there. They've, I put quotes around, activated those, but those were all through grants and other private dollars were raised to activate those particular alleys, and I think they turned out great. Additionally, they hosted in the fall of last year a vacant building tour of 11 different vacant businesses in the area, in the district. I believe they even rented one out that very night. So, again, they've taken a very active participation in what the downtown is and can be. Lastly, I know in speaking with many of you, I've stated that 23 businesses had been either relocated or created here. I misspoke, and I apologize. It was 22 businesses. It was 10 new businesses created in the district and 12 businesses relocated to the Heart of Jasper District. Additionally, they did seven facade improvements, which saw $177,000 in private investment into our downtown. As we wrapped up the year, we finished the revitalization around the Courthouse Square in Phase 1. My department, my prior administration, and myself saw approximately 19 updates to the community as far as the progress of that phase. And then here shortly in the fall, when we begin Phase 2, we'll again be continually updating the community as to the progress and status of that. We look forward to that, again, I believe slightly after Stroud's invest. Additionally, we created the Downtown Jasper Social District. It was one of Indiana's first designated outdoor refreshment areas. That was a large project that saw 10 permitted, current bars and restaurants become 10 permitted, excuse me, designated permities. And though we're still in kind of infancy, infancy, I can't even speak, as we're at the beginning of that process, we are still examining kind of what that process is gonna be, but it's another economic layer and a tool that is only gonna help serve the downtown in the future. I believe in this fall, or maybe this winter, we'll look at what maybe, you know, any revisions that could occur, but we said that we'd take a one-year moratorium before we made any changes.
Josh, I think I just told a couple of council members here, we were in Cincinnati a couple of weekends ago, and my wife even pointed out, she's like, "Oh, they have the same tour." Border stickers out on the sidewalk in Cincinnati that we had here. I'm like, "Well, yeah, it's a real thing. It's a real thing. It seems to be coming along just fine."
We don't try to reinvent the wheel. We just try to recycle the wheel. So, 2024, moving right along by the numbers as of through the month of May, we've got about 80 building permits going on. And again, the same types of permits, fence, pool, sign, demolition, mobile vendor, mobile food vendor, all those are about on par where we have been the last two years. And then lastly, one of the last, or probably one of the bigger items that occur through my department is the comprehensive planning and the updating of the Impact Jasper Comprehensive Plan. Earlier this afternoon, I sent out the scorecard for that, for our Impact Jasper Comprehensive Plan. You'll note as you go through that, that a lot of the key items in that plan have been accomplished or ongoing currently. There are still always things to be done and work to be done in that, but I bring that up because we would be asking and considering, or asking your consideration, to look at funding and update for the comprehensive plan in the budget year for 2025. And with that-
I noted also during that, in your report, Josh, that you had changed some of those that had been marked as complete as ongoing now because they are, it's not intended to ever be complete.
That is correct, Mayor, and I appreciate you pointing that out. Yeah, some of the items marked as complete, when you looked at really what the intent of the category was or the activity, it's really meant to be an ongoing thing or should be an ongoing thing. So, we'll look at keeping those even into the next comprehensive plan as ongoing items. With that, I would entertain any questions?
Do you want to comment about your staffing and the changes it takes place?
Sure. So, again, as I mentioned, Steve Dills will be retiring at the end of this month, and again, we can't thank Steve enough for the diligent efforts he's made in our department, and again, for truly being a great customer service-focused individual who's become the face of the department. With that, we did hire Adam Bauer, and he began May 20th of this year. Adam has done amazingly well, and I couldn't be more pleased with any individual having come into that position. We kind of knew, based on his history, what we were gonna get or what we were kind of gonna expect as far as public interaction, and he's just blown me out of the water in his capacity and what he's able to do and what he's willing to take on. And I think what you'll see from us is, we'll continue to be customer-focused and, you know, trying to help people, but on the other side, we all know that there's probably things that we've been trying to get cleaned up around, you know, town for a little while, or the little issues, and, you know, he even mentioned it to me today, because we've discussed this a few times, that, you know, as you get into this, you'll just see things that have been there forever, but now, they just pop out at you. So, I said, "It's a sickness," and then he said, "Yes."
This is a role that we've talked about for several years, about eventually going to full-time, and this is, this step is now in place, so.
That is correct. And that capacity in that role and moving from a part-time role to a full-time role, not only offloads some of that burden to me to do some of the bigger things as far as your comprehensive plan and those ongoing types of things, but it also gives us the capacity, again, of moving to a little bit of an enforcement role to get some of those ongoing problems and issues cleaned up, so.
Thanks, Josh.
Very good. Thank you.
Josh, I'm curious, what's your best estimate on, now we're four years removed from the census, but what would you estimate is our population in Jasper now?
I would refer you back to our housing study that DuBois Strong just did a few months ago. I believe it was around 17,000 estimated. I wouldn't have any better numbers than that.
Okay.
And gaining, and again-
And, yeah, and gaining every day.
Appreciate all your help and everything you're doing here. As, again, sitting on the Planning Commission for a number of years here, Josh was in a goal, several of you guys as well popped in for the Impact Jasper Comprehensive Plan. We picked one up off the shelf in '93, I believe, at 16, and got this thing up and rolling. It was about an 18-month, 20-month process to get it in and finished. Won an award on that one, again, as the best comprehensive plan in the state at that point, and here we are, sitting with about 75%, 80% of it checked off. You know, these are 10- to 20-year plans. Tried to vision out with constituents and all the parties involved, and we're knocking them out seven, eight years. So, it's been a whirlwind in there, but in a good way.
Thank you. And to your point, not to go off script, per se, but we are gaining, and we would be gaining more if housing weren't such an issue, and it's kind of a universal issue, so we need to, as a city, start looking at how we're going to address those things. So, in the coming months and years, if you've not already, you're gonna hear things like missing middle, ADUs, which are accessory dwelling units. You're gonna hear about infill. We're gonna hear about, you know, doing more with less on the property and the land that we already have, and being more mindful about how we can eke every single economic dollar out of those things, so. Anything else?
Of course, we had two projects on the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
That's right.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the application for gas contractor's license for Robert Krieger, Wagler &amp; Sons, and it does require council approval. The score was well above our minimum.
Again, I enjoy seeing the nice scores in the other regions of where we are on there now, so I would make a motion to go ahead and grant the license application for Robert Krieger, here.
I have a motion from Paul.
I'll second the motion.
I have a second from Vince. Any further discussion on that?
I like seeing the actual tests. We're gonna take it ourselves.
Yeah, that was kind of nice, too, yeah. We normally don't get those, do we? We just get the score, so it was nice to have the test. You're right, John. Alright. No further discussion? All in favor, send me by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda is Resolution Number 2024-7, Resolution Authorizing Funds Transfer Community Crossings Fund. This resolution is a one-reading-only procedure. Could I have a motion to have the resolution read in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read Resolution 2024-7 by title only.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
I have a second from Paul. All in favor, send me by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Could the city attorney please read Resolution 2024-7 by title only?
Resolution Number 2024-7. A resolution of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, authorizing funds transfer, community crossings funds.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt Resolution 2024-7?
So moved.
I have a motion from John.
I'll second.
A second from Phil. Further discussion?
I just want to point out that last month, we appropriated additional funds for this project, and this is simply moving those funds into the Community Crossing Fund.
Just as a refresher, where are these funds being moved from?
I would have to look back on the appropriation from last, but I believe it was in Jeff's budget, in the street department budget.
That would be in the minutes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, send me by saying aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance Number 2024-6, An Ordinance Changing the Zone Map and Establishing Indiana Desk Planned Unit Development District.
I'm gonna make a motion to read by title only for the second reading, please.
Okay, this is on the second reading, and Paul's made a motion for title only. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from John. All in favor, send me by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with the city attorney, please read ordinance Number 2024-6 by title only.
Ordinance Number 2024-6. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, changing the zone map and establishing Indiana Desk Planned Unit Development District.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the second reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
A second from Phil. Further discussion?
Again, this gets back to our presentation from last month, and we all saw it there again, and it just gives them a little more leeway to operate within the boundaries of the former Indiana desk site.
Yeah.
It's a great plan.
It's been well-vetted and looks, we're excited about how it's gonna move forward.
That's professional organizations working on this and local content. I think it's nothing but positive. If there's no further discussion, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor, send me by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's ask, I'd like to ask for a motion to read the ordinance on the third and final reading in full or by title only.
Make a motion, we read it by title only.
Chad, title only?
Second.
A second from Paul. All in favor, send me by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With the city attorney, please read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance Number 2024-6. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, changing the zone map and establishing the Indiana Desk Planned Unit Development District.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the third and final reading?
Make that motion.
Motion from Paul?
I'll second.
A second from Chad. Further discussion?
I appreciate from last month, having the overall site designs, you can really see what this- I appreciate from last month, having the overall site designs, you can really see what this project's going to look like.
And the potential for the future as well.
Exactly.
Okay. No further discussion. All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It's not too often we bleed into three pages on our agenda, but we may have this time. We have a long.
Keep getting these in here. We'll send you.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2024-11. It's a resolution adopting a written fiscal plan, establishing a policy for the provision of services to an annexed area called North Ridge. Could I have a motion to have the resolution read in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
I have a motion from John to read by title only.
I'll second.
A second from Vince. All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read Resolution 2024-11 by title only.
Resolution Number 2024-11, A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, Adopting a Written Fiscal Plan and Establishing a Policy for the Provision of Services to an Annexed Area, North Ridge Subdivision.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt Resolution Number 2024-11?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I have a motion from John?
I will second.
I have a second from Chad. Further discussion on this?
I had a couple of questions, like on Exhibit A for the annexation fiscal plan. Who keeps track of those timelines? For example, there's things that would be done within one year, within three years, within four years, within four years on page one of that. Just curious as to how, and even on page two, there's something would be done within four years or, or for four years. So just curious as to how are those things kept tracked of to make sure that those things are done in a timely manner or done at all?
Yeah, I think the key word in all, in that introduction, it says, "All is estimated," so it's not really.
The department leads to review.
I believe that departments would be responsible for fire protection, you know, ensuring that fire protection, what stormwater, street lighting, those types of things are, are provided to the area within those, within those years.
Which is nice to see. We got an annexation coming up.
It is. I'm not questioning that. And then also, I can't remember from maybe a prior presentation here, or maybe it was at the plan commission, on how many single-family dwellings, multifamily and, and HOA areas are a part of this. Because I know it's a big.
So I'll take the lead on that question to Nancy if you want to. We had another planning commission meeting twice and they brought it in and we talked about it. Going to be building an HOA that is seven units, seven build-out units on there, quadplexes. So you have twenty-eight that will be multifamily in a, you know, HOA setting on there. And then you have forty single residences in phase one that's coming through. So that was a part of a really nice march we had when we had about fifty-two million dollars worth of projects brought in front of us in housing only in a month, which was wonderful. And again, that was phase one of.
Phase one.
Multiple-year, multiple-phase rollout. A couple of ones coming.
It's good to see some HOAs in there because it seems like it's becoming more popular, people retiring and downsizing.
Yeah, and there will be kind of a copy of Autumn Creek, that, to the rallying drive that came through. So just configured a little differently. You can have a kind of a teardrop in the middle now, making, uh, emergency services, trash picking, all that, but a little easier than backing down and coming back out.
And I'm going to go back to your first question. Many of the, um, this non-capital investment, like the services, are going to be provided almost immediately. So it's not, it's not a, a big issue to keep track of all of those items.
But really, Paul, to what you said, on an HOA like Autumn Creek, really, the city doesn't pick up trash there.
No, they'll.
So, you know, not every service, and I think the residents there also should realize that they are responsible for that street. That is not a city street. That, that is a, a street owned by that HOA.
Private drive in that particular location. Yeah, absolutely. And it's the same thing. I'm just giving you for reference, pointing there.
Probably more for emergency vehicles.
The first one we talked about, it was kind of laid out, the fit of space that was available. Now we have a much larger canvas, so learning from that one. But hey, you know, it made it a little tough getting in and, in and back, so.
It does, yeah.
Made adjustments and they did that, most of that on their own, I believe. It was just maybe the lines from that have a little reading space in between and middle.
And I did find a typo on page nine. The word municipal is spelled wrong.
Okay, we can fix that. I was going to say that I think it's important to point out on page nine that, um, as a result of this annexation, there will be no increase in our levy. Um, so I mean, I think that's the key there.
This is always important.
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, I have a motion from John, a second from Chad. All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is passed. Next on the agenda is Ordinance Number 2024-8. It's an ordinance annexing certain adjacent contiguous territory into the corporate limits of the City of Jasper, Indiana. This does require a public hearing, and this was advertised as required. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this matter at this time?
Seeing no one at this time, Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion from Paul to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second from Vince. All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the first reading in full or by title only?
Would the motion be read by title only, please?
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only.
I'll second.
I have a second from Phil. All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, would the city attorney please read the ordinance, 2024-8, by title only?
Ordinance Number 2024-8, An Ordinance Annexing Certain Adjacent and Contiguous Territory Into the Corporate Limits of the City of Jasper, Indiana, North Ridge Subdivision.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the first reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
A second from Chad. Further discussion on this? I think they did a pretty good job of spelling it out, you know, what their intents are here, so. If there's no further discussion, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Then we bring that back to July.
Yeah, this is the first reading. We'll come back second, third, and.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is Resolution Number 2024-8, Resolution Appointing a New Commissioner to the Indiana Municipal Power Agency. Could I have a motion to have the resolution read in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
I have a motion from Vince to read by title only.
Second it.
I have a second from Paul. All in favor, sign it by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would the city attorney please read Resolution 2024-8 by title only?
Resolution Number 2024-8, A Resolution Appointing a New Commissioner to the Indiana Municipal Power Agency.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt Resolution 2024-8?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Paul.
Second.
A second from John. Further discussion? This is, uh, with Bud's retirement, this is the right one, right?
Yeah.
With Bud's retirement, um, it's a natural thing, I think, for Rob Young to step into this role at this time. Stan is still handling two roles within the electric department, or he would have been considered in this, but I think Rob will do a good job in representing the city and with Empa. He's already been in good, good communication with them.
Yeah, he'll learn a lot from Empa also.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Resolution Number 2024-9, Resolution in Support of Development of a Northside Sewage Treatment Plant, An Application for Funding from the State Revolving Fund, and Addressing Related Matters. This is a one-reading-only procedure. Could I have a motion to have the resolution read in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read by title only, please.
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only.
I'll second that.
I have a second from Phil. All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read Resolution 2024-9 by title only?
Resolution Number 2024-9, A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, in Support of Development of a Northside Sewage Treatment Plant and an Application for Funding from the State Revolving Fund and Addressing Related Matters.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt Resolution 2024-9?
So moved.
John?
Second.
Second from Nancy. Further discussion?
So is this type of resolution necessary in order to apply for the State Revolving Fund? Is that the whole process of this?
It just makes it a more competitive application.
Because I think we were denied the first time. Maybe not we weren't, but the district was.
Well, it's not a matter necessarily of being denied, but where we scored.
Yeah.
And so by, um, providing them with proof that there is support, that just adds to the scoring.
Are we asking other communities to also adopt a resolution in support of this?
The county, since they are presumably our partners in the project.
Good questions. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is Ordinance Number 2024-9, Ordinance Designating the Economic Development Target Area. Could I have a motion to consider the ordinance for one reading only? I have a motion from Paul.
I'll second.
A second from Vince. All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Could I have a motion to have the ordinance read in full or by title only?
I make a motion to read by title only.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
A second from Chad. All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read Ordinance Number 2024-9 by title only?
Ordinance Number 2024-9, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, Designating an Economic Development Target Area in the Indiana Desk District.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt Ordinance Number 2024-9?
I still move.
I have a motion from Chad.
I'll second that.
I have a second from Vince. Further discussion?
So, um, as you know, you're familiar with the Indiana Desk District project. You've heard about it from a, um, a rezoning perspective. In order, they did apply for a tax abatement, and that was scored by the Economic Development Commission. I think they scored a ninety-five. And so you will also be considering tonight a resolution for approval, a declaratory resolution approving the tax abatement for the first reading or the first introduction. In order for that project to receive tax abatement, because it involves retail potentially as well as residential, an economic development target area is required to be formed. And so, um, that's what this ordinance does. It identifies that specific area as an economic development target area for which tax abatement would be available for residential as well as retail.
Other discussion? Questions?
So this would not be needed if they just have the big space and, you know, the.
Or residential. It's both.
Any other questions?
So this isn't, or is it, approving the tax abatement request?
No, this is just establishing.
Okay. Okay. Just designating it.
Okay. I have a motion from Chad and a second from Vince. All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on the agenda is Resolution Designating a Portion of the City of Jasper as an Economic Revitalization Area, The Crimp Corporation. Is that right?
That's the owner. That's right.
Okay. So could I have a motion to have the resolution read in full or by title only?
Would the motion be read by title only?
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only.
I'll second.
And a second from Vince. All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read Resolution 2024-10 by title only?
Resolution Number 2024-10, A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, Designating a Portion of the City of Jasper, Indiana, as an Economic Revitalization Area, Crimp Corporation Incorporated.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt Resolution 2024-10?
So moved.
I have a motion from John?
I'll second that.
A second from Nancy. Further discussion on this?
I had some questions early on that I brought to Renee's attention and Josh's. Excited about the project, you know, not dissimilar from one that we had just next door to this parcel of ground in there. And when the tax abatement came up, my question for them, and I don't know if we've gotten anywhere on that question Renee or on there, but my, my thought was on the, on the ten-year abatement, was there a way that we can peel out of, give, giving it a hundred percent for so long, was there a way or a manner that we were able to peel the salary for an additional officer that got in there? The first one we put in had, took an incredible amount of resources from, from our department. It was there several times a day. I have no idea if, if these guys I, I trust or I hope, they will have a little better management system in place. But fooled me once, shame on you fooled me twice, shame on me, is my, kind of my thought on that. And I don't know, like I said, if we got any further on that question or, or.
So the Economic Development Commission went through and scored it just based on our objective scoring criteria.
Sure.
They received a, as I said, I think it was a ninety-five.
It was.
Which amounts to a ten-year abatement with the last three years, eight, nine, and ten, being seventy-five percent, fifty percent, and twenty-five percent, and the rest of the years being one hundred percent. That's a recommendation to the Common Council to use the abatement schedule that was approved years ago. That's a recommendation. So the, the resolution in front of you adopts that, that recommend, recommended schedule. The council doesn't have to adopt that schedule. Now, having said that, I will say that that issue, um, the management is, is what you're talking about, the management of the property, I think, has been questioned at every presentation. And Danny Miller, Danny Miller.
Danny Miller, yeah.
Um, you know, addressed that Flair Dan Collins has years of experience and every intention of having a person onsite, an onsite manager at that location.
And then that's the difference between some of the other locations. And that's the difference between some of the other locations where we had the trouble. And I remember the, specifically the lofts where we were called to quite often. A lot of that was the initial tenants brought in there were, I'm going to say.
Rowdy.
A little rowdy, yeah, because that's why they were kind of incented to move on and move into the lofts when that was available at a low cost. The, so it became an accumulation of a number of things. I do think the police department, our runs right now to the loss have been minimal, and I think it will continue to be so. Danny, Danny had made the comment with all of their properties, they have onsite managers, and that makes a huge difference. Bill, you want to comment?
I'd just like to say this, Bill Kaiser on behalf of Crimp Corporation and Flair Dan Collins, to bring to the council's attention that there is an obligation for, if this tax abatement is approved, to come back every year. So to the extent that there are issues, problems, questions that would arise, I don't expect them to arise, but I can't predict the future either, that this council has the right to, you know, look at the abatement that's been granted and make decisions about that abatement if in fact the applicant doesn't follow through with what it said in its application process. So to the extent, Paul, to your point, that there is extraordinary law enforcement involved or some other piece, then that, you know, could result in some kind of clawback or penalty. I don't know what all the provisions are, but there is a right and obligation for them to come to you, to speak, and to fill out part of that question in the form. So they are held annually to a standard, so at least, at least once, they're going to come in front of you, and certainly you can beat on them or as appropriate, clawback or do things that may be necessary to the extent they haven't complied. So you do have, I mean, my point is, you do have a procedure.
Yeah, try to make sure I do my due diligence.
Yeah. I just don't want to be penalized before we start the project.
And I think it's too, too bills. Yes.
Yes, yeah, they have to come in, provide a form, their CF1 form that has to be submitted.
And on that form, they have to indicate how many employees that they said they were going to have and how many they actually have, so I think that would be part of that.
Yeah, there's a written accountability and a physical presence reporting accountability to this.
Well, and like I said, I just, it was one of those things that was weighing on my mind from the last one, as we've said through this and.
I can make really understandable, proximity is really tough too, right? It's like, okay, what's happening?
And a $40 million project, we're not talking about a whole lot of money in that 10-year tax, tax abatement.
I think the other significant difference is that Flair Dan Collins continues to own its projects, manage its projects, so, you know, this is not something it's developing in order to offload and flip, so to speak, so.
Thank you for your comments, Bill.
And time will tell.
That's right.
Any other questions?
Renee, were you saying something?
No, no. I was answering your question.
Yeah, no, excited about the project, that was just my, my thought was, you know, it's something we can jump ahead of if we need to.
I think it's a good.
Time to do it, and we can do the one-year review, we'll see what reactionary, trying to be proactive instead of reactive, so.
Well, and as like Phil said, that's all the more reason that they appear in person for their tax abatement review every year.
Yeah. Okay, with that, I have a motion from John and a second from Nancy. Is there any other questions? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I think.
Mayor, I do actually have one other item, just for information only. We received a notification from our national opioid litigation representatives that another settlement with Kroger is on the horizon, and so they asked us to begin letting, putting this item on the agenda because we will eventually need to opt in or out of that settlement. I'm just telling you that that's coming. We are supposed to be receiving additional information, which we have not received to date, so just kind of an FYI, that will likely be on the agenda for the July meeting. I think the deadline is maybe August 12th for that opt-in or opt-out, so that'll be, as soon as I get the information, I'll let you know. I won't wait until immediately before the meeting.
And we have, in the past, opted in on these.
That's correct.
So, and have received the funding.
And we never did continue with that, how we're going to spend the funds, so we probably need to get back to that topic again at some point in the near future. And we had involved Officer Logan Jones in our discussion, and I think he would probably be a key player yet in that discussion as we decide how to spend these funds.
Right, I think that one of the ideas that was discussed was allowing the city and the city council to remain in control of how those funds are spent rather than to offload them to another agency for that consideration. And so the budget time of the year would be an appropriate time for someone like Logan to have an idea to bring to the council for that purpose.
Yeah, so Mayor, I know you're making a note there, so are you going to reach out to Logan, at least have him bring a couple of things before the council for this budget time, that'd be a great idea.
Nancy, I just wanted to answer your question, that the transfer, that appropriation came from the KIMCAP fund, the KIMCAP Development Fund.
Okay, anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to John.
So moved.
John, right there.
Okay, I have John. You want a second, Paul?
Yeah.
Paul's second, all in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.